I'd like to call this March 12th regular council meeting to order. Everybody please rise for a moment of silence. Let's remember all those who passed away during the month. Please salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the world, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, Don, you want to give a roll call, please?
Mr. Girardi.
President.
Mr. Rubio.
President.
Mr. Lamont.
Here.
Here.
Pauline.
Here.
Here.
President.
We have a couple things, I think. I'm looking for Gene. Here you are. Gene, you want to go to the podium so we can hold you up?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to present tonight on behalf of the AOC our summer camp proposal. Borough Council President, members of council, Mr. Mayor, borough officials, ladies and gentlemen of Bristol Borough. My name is Gene Williams with the Grundy Foundation, as I said, here tonight, speaking on behalf of AOC in our summer camp. And with me tonight is our project coordinator Stacy Tanham. Both Stacy and I will be presenting what our plans are for the upcoming summer camp. And it's hard to believe that we're talking on New Easter tonight, yet we want to talk about summer camp. So, hope is on the way. What is the AOC since 2010? The AOC is about helping students learn to live and lead. In front of everyone, I think there should be proposed that Stacy will go a little bit more detail as to what basically we're talking about this year. But the whole purpose of what we've been doing over the years, the summer camp, is to stop this summer slide, to hopefully help our kids maintain grade average, and if not maintain, maybe accelerate a little bit. The camp is funded by the 21st Century Grant, the school district's 21st Century Learning Center grant. However, the grant does not pay, and you know this, does not pay for things such as field trips. It's those field trips that you, council, have been very, very helpful in paying for and providing. Those are the things that kids really look forward to. In years past, it's been a ballgame, it's been, I know, swimming, it's been the Franklin Institute, those types of extra activities, which for a lot of our families, they can't afford. So but for the help that you provide, they would not be able to experience these, you know, extracurricular activities, if you will. So with that in mind, I'd like to respectfully request $10,000 for a bevy of field trips, which again Stacy will be explaining a little bit more in detail. With that, the AOC will be assisting in those field trips as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Stacy Tanham, our project coordinator.
Hello. As Gene mentioned, my name is Stacy Tanham. I'm the project coordinator for the 21st Century Community Learning Center here in Bristol Borough. I oversee the three sites that we have at the Bristol Middle High School, Snyder Girardi Elementary, and St. Mark Catholic School. And for our summer camps, we service all grades, rising first through 12th grade. At Snyder, we are expecting to have about 200 students in our camp, rising first through 8th grade. And then at the high school, we're aiming for about 100 students, rising 9th through 12th grade. In the past, we've had, at our summer camp, about 120 to 130 students attending at Snyder. And like Gene said, one of the things that they look most forward to are the trips that they go on. In the past, we've done Trenton Thunder Games and the Nishami State Park pool trip, where we have, for both trips, we have parents volunteer as guardians, and it's a great family day for them, the pool especially. They get to cook out together, they get to swim together. It's a full-day event, and the kids really love it. One of the things that we're looking to do in place of Trenton Thunder this year is take the kids to Snipes Farm in Marsville. And we've put together an idea of three different trips to keep the students' grade levels together, keeping it with the youngers, the middles, and then the older kids, about 60 kids per trip. It's a three-hour trip. They get to see the creek that's on site, they get to see the animals, all the chickens laying eggs. They'll be learning about planting food and how to then make nutritional meals out of that food. So it's a three-hour trip. We bus them to the farm and back to the farm. We have our staff with us. Again, we'll be inviting parents along to help chaperone. And then the pool day, we are looking to bring that back again this year. We're looking into possibly different locations, trying to get it more private so that it's just our camp there. We can keep a better eye on the kids. They don't have to interact with other kids that may not follow the same rules that we do, that we like to instill, just to keep the safety precautions up there. But the kids love the swimming day. It's always, it's the last day of the camp. Everybody shows up on that day, and it really helps us to gain participation throughout the summer. We let them know that we expect them to come to camp every day, and these are the rewards for them. And other rewards that we're bringing on this year is bringing on more partners to come into our camp as well. Franklin Institute is one of them. They come in and they do a presentation on weather or space, and they bring all the materials. We bring all the kids together. They really enjoy it. It's like a whole, it's a whole presentation. And we're looking to bring Silver Lake Nature Center in again as well. They come in during our school year, and they work with the kids in small groups, but we would like to do the bigger presentations with all the kids. And the Heritage Conservancy is going to come in and possibly take the kids out into the community to different nature, down to the marsh, to the marsh, I'm sorry, and the wharf, and get to know different things about water animals and the plants that grow there. Really get them out into nature, into STEM, into hands-on STEM activities. At the high school, typically, we have our history and culture summer camp. It's a week-long intensive where the students get together with Mike Lally, and he's taken them to different places in the past, such as the Constitution Center, Acadia Nature Center, Franklin Institute. And it's really great to see these kids get to get out of the borough and visit all these different places. They learn things that they never thought they'd be able to learn or see firsthand. We have garden club, which is in the works of building an aquaponic system for these students to learn not only about planting, but about the different ways to plant and how to save energy. We work with Bucks County Community College for Lead and Succeed, and that's a leadership and career preparation program, where we have, the college sends people to work with our students, and the students get to go to the campus themselves and see what a day is like working or being in a college classroom. We're also looking to partner with the school sports over the summer, bringing the kids into not only further practices or their two-a-days that they might be doing with the sports teams, but also pairing it with academics and nutrition, giving them lunches or snacks throughout the day to keep them, of course, they come in for the sports to play, but also to keep them from that summer slide. And lastly, our workplace readiness. They actually run all year long during the school year, and they focus with students who have IEPs, and they focus on building resumes and application process, mock interviews, driving permit tests, all those kinds of things to get these kids ready to go out into the workforce, into careers, and know that they have the tools necessary to do so. I want to thank you for your time, and...
Thank you.
So the Grundy Foundation is here this evening to ask again for our $10,000 donation, which is in our budget already. So unless, do we need that on, do we do that tonight, or can we do it in April? I think it'd be nice to do it tonight. So could we suspend the rules and put that on the agenda for this evening so we can vote on that?
Okay.
So we'll make that item number nine to award $10,000 to the AOC. Okay? Anybody questions for Gene or...
Just keep up the good work, because sometimes in this town, if it wasn't for your program, some of the kids would not get to go swimming or even eat during the day while their parents are away working, honestly. So thank you for...
Absolutely. I appreciate the opportunity to work in Bristol Borough. It really is an amazing community.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Jose. Gene, again, I'm sorry.
Jose Acevedo, North Ward, historic Bristol. I have just two cleanup events coming up. Hard to believe, like Gene said, with this New Easter is coming. The first one's Canal Cleanup Day. This is the annual East End Bristol Cleanup Event. The sponsor for this is Friends of Delaware Canal and Bristol Borough Garden Club. And I want to thank Donna Moore McCleskey for hosting this event on Facebook. The date for that's going to be Saturday, April 7th, from 9:00 to 2:00. The rain date will be the following Saturday, April 14th, from 9:00 to 2:00. We're going to meet at the Canal Lagoon on Jefferson Avenue. Trash bags, gloves, pickup sticks, and safety vests will be provided. This is a great opportunity for students to earn community service hours. The area we're looking to cover is from Green Lane to the Delaware River. Usually, we don't get enough volunteers for that, so we kind of concentrate on the lagoon and the Adams Hollow Creek, and then the canal from Jefferson Avenue to Beavis Street. So the more volunteers we get, the better off we will trying to cover that whole area. So that's the date for the canal, is Saturday, April 7th, and the rain date is the 14th, the following Saturday. Both days are 9:00 to 2:00.
Jose, are you having flowers that day too?
No, this is separate. This is the canal.
All right.
The second event's going to be the Keep Bristol Beautiful event. That's Saturday, April 20th, 28th, from 9:00 to 2:00. The rain date for that is Sunday, the following day, the 29th, from 9:00 to 2:00 also. Last year, we met Grundy Park because of all the construction that was going on at the docks. It's an ideal location, so we're going to keep that location this year. And that's located on Prospect, it's hard to believe, some people didn't know where Grundy Park was when we posted it. So it's located on Prospect Street, under the Grundy clock, so it should be easy to find. And people can park at the Amtrak parking lot. Again, trash bags, gloves, pickup sticks, safety vests will be provided. The flower sale will be that day. We usually sell about 2,000 flowers that day. And I want to thank Michael Gorman. He's in charge of that. He does a great job with picking up the flowers, having them delivered. Like I said, 2,000 flowers, a lot of flowers, but it helps to beautify the town. We also do T-shirts. This year's T-shirts are going to be black with a white logo and white lettering. They can be purchased at Great Ideas by Ann. She's working on the price on that right now, so I would hold off. I'll be back beginning the first Monday in April, make some further announcements as far as that goes. And that's about it. Hunker down for the storm. Thank you for the opportunity, Ralph.
Thank you.
As I report every month, I meet with the fire chief and all the other fire chiefs in town called the Fire Board. Just a couple of things I want to pass along to you that, in the month of February, we had a total of 40 calls. 20 of those were medical-related. Also, too, the Fire Board is looking at the process of having a fire prevention program at Grundy Towers. We're working on a date, so I'll keep you guys advised. Also, too, we had a discussion, I'm kind of surprised at this piece of information, that the school district has advised that Bristol High School Prom DUI Program for 2018 was canceled. Program is designed to increase the level of awareness for those going to the prom and the catastrophic potential of driving under the influence. No specific reason was provided. It's something that the police and the fire department and the rescue squad, we've been doing for multiple years. We were just informed by the advisors that they're not going to do it this year. Also, too, I want to thank all the borough employees, streets and highway, fire department, the police department, and the emergency services for the outstanding job that they do during these emergencies we have in town with these winter storms, especially our emergency management coordinator. Just a piece of information I'd like to communicate out to everybody in Bristol Borough that if you see a tree go down, pulls the wires down, they're sparking, call 911. But make sure you also call PICO to get your name on the list, to get that address on the list. Don't assume that the borough is going to do that. We do that. When Merle finds out, or Herbie finds out, or the police chief finds out, we start this list of people, and we start to double-check with PICO. And sometimes those lists don't match up. They're saying, "Well, no, we haven't had a PICO business," saying we don't have a report of that. So make sure that you do call PICO Emergency. I know people say, "Well, if we don't have any power, we can't do that." But just about everybody has cell phones today, and most of the time, they're working. So that would help us out a great deal in getting that information to PICO. Also, too, I want to thank the AOC who were here tonight. We have this DARE program that we've been running for years in the school district, the Drug Abuse Resistance Program. And it's a nice little thing that we like to do every year is provide to kids who participate with T-shirts. Well, we're a little short this year, and the AOC and the Police Benevolent Association kicked in enough money to provide the three to four hundred T-shirts that we need. So I just want to give them a shout-out, thank you. That's it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to open up public participation. So anybody on this room want to speak on anything, go to the podium, state your name and address. Anybody on this side of the room want to speak on anything, state your name and address. Easy night. That ends public participation. Okay, before we get into our agenda, there's just, Betty, you wanted to mention one thing.
Yeah. With this last storm that we had, we had a lot of power out of this, but the most important one, in my opinion, was the Grundy Towers. They went a little over 24 hours without power. We had Merle, we had Mr. Dillon on the phone with Tommy Tomlinson, Rob Lockery, me, Mr. Dillon, I mean, I'm sorry, Ralph, Merle. We went to Grundy's to speak to the seniors. They were really upset. It was sad because there was no one there working in the offices. There was one gentleman that was hanging out and trying to get the power back on. But I'd like to thank you guys for keeping us in tune with what was going on over there. And when I got there, it was cute, they're all hungry and, you know, you know. But I think we need to look into meeting with Grundel and whoever else about a better generator. I know we met with them before, and they seem to say they don't have the money, but I just don't understand how, at one time, they told us the power was on and it wasn't. So it's just something that I worry about, them being seniors, and it's just something we need to look into further. At the same time, I'd like to thank Johnny Chance, who at one time, well, Number Three's firehouse, sat there all day because we were going to take the seniors there to get them some, you know, warm spaces and try to get them some food. But, you know, people are set in their ways, and they don't want to leave. But they want to complain, but they don't want to leave, but I understand totally why. I wouldn't want to leave my home either. So thank you, Johnny, wherever you're at. I mean, he was there all day waiting. And the school, at one time, this Merle called me, and we were going to start busing them to the school. I thank the school for letting us, you know, have that opportunity, but again, it was a no-go for them. We tried, we'll continue to try, and we'll work hard to keep them safe. Also, I want to thank Kevin Branigan, who I personally saw running around like a madman with a chainsaw, and with this young man here, just helping people out. The trees were falling on people's cars. My neighbor, he's handicapped, and he was out there taking the tree off and cutting it off. And this is, you know, not on our time. And we need a lot of people that are willing to help other people, which I hope that's something that we do normally anyway. So thank you for that.
Mr. President, can I say something?
Sure.
I got a couple of phone calls about Merle Winslow in the last couple of days.
More complaints? No, I'm just kidding.
All complaints. The people said that he showed up at their door when he heard they didn't have power, and then he came back to make sure that the power was back on. Merle, we are indebted to you. I mean, you are amazing, and we really appreciate everything you do. Thank you.
Okay, just to piggyback on what Betty was saying about Grundy Towers. We met with them, but I think it wasn't until we got Tommy Tomlinson involved, who was out of town, I think he was in Florida, and he's on the phone with PICO, and then Rob Lockery got involved, that really started bringing this together. Because at 2:00 in the afternoon when we were there, they said, to me, Merle, and Betty, we're on the phone with PICO, that the power was on. And we said, "Well, we're standing in the building, there's no power." So I want to thank them for taking the time to really put a lot of pressure on trying to get this building up and running, and they did. And I had asked the manager to send a letter to meet with Grundel, who runs the buildings, to see how we can do something about a generator. I think it's, there are seniors in the place, and I think that they need to be treated a little bit better, especially when it's freezing out. The generator that they have now only runs the emergency lighting, the one elevator, and a couple receptacles in the hallways so they can plug their oxygen machines in. So, I mean, and they didn't even have that until when, Merle?
8:15.
No, I mean, they didn't have a generator until, it used to be pitch black at one point.
No, they had the generator as soon as the power went out.
No. How long had the generator been there?
Well, they had a smaller one when they first built the building, and then they put a bigger one in. But when we went to have a meeting with them, I thought they would be ready for a change, and the generator's been there probably 20 years now.
It's really limited, and they cook, they need it for cooking, they need it for heat, you know, so...
Hot water?
I don't have a problem. Yeah, they can't take a shower, there's no hot water. So I think we really need to focus on how we can work with them, not to try to make this happen. I think that they deserve to have a generator that runs that building. So I don't know, I'm sure it's hundreds of thousands of dollars, but we're going to see if we can get a meeting set up with them. And I understand money's tight, there's no question. They have more than one building, and so I'm not blaming them for not having a generator. It's just that we need to get one put in, and we need to figure out, as a community, how do we make this happen? All right, because everybody knows there was some damage down at the baseball fields, the batting cage. Well, before I get into that, public participation's done. The batting cages collapsed, the weight of the snow took both roofs down in the batting cages, and the one backstop, the top of it on the minor league field, came down. So me and Jim, and we met borough workers out there today, and we had Mr. Polensky with us to try to figure out how to make this, you know, get this stuff fixed. The borough workers, I think, have secured the backstop on the minor league field, but the batting cages has a lot of damage. So again, that's something that we're going to look at. I had some fence companies come out today. We also had a meet, so we're working on that to try to get that done as soon as possible because we know they need that. We had a second meeting today with Tom Schaefer and Mike Lally regarding the fields. So let me just try to put this all in the perspective for everybody. There's two issues here. One is the borough, and Tony, you weren't here, so if you want to discuss anything about Leo's contract, now's the time. The borough pays Leo $12,000 a year. Out of that $12,000, he maintains the fields. When I say maintains the fields, he grades them, he uses our new machine to fluff up the dirt, get them ready to play games on. That is all being done under the borough contract. The school board contract with him, that Mr. Girardi brought up for whatever the amount is, it's $1,400. What they give him $1,400 for is to line the fields and clean up after they're done a little bit. So our contract for years has been paying him to do the maintenance on the fields for the high school and for Little League and for the Spanish League and for the soccer league and for anything that goes on. So we talked about it today. It's about six months worth of work that he does. So we figured out today, when Mike and Tom was here, that it's basically, they use the field March, April, and May, and Mike said sometimes goes into June with playoffs and things like that. So we just used a round number of 90 days that they're using the field. So the school, we pay him, if you take his contract and break it down over six months, it's like $2,000 a month. So if you break it down into weeks and then into days, it's about $26 a day that we're paying Leo to maintain five fields. So what we talked about today is, I just want council to be aware that we're paying him to do the high school fields. Not that we're asking the high school for money. It's been like this for years, from when Junior did him, and Leo's son, and Leo. All I want you to know is that the money that the school's paying him is not to maintain the field. It's to line the fields for their games. I think they give him $30 a game to line the fields. We pay for everything else. If the school is going to do their, from what we understand, Mr. Dillon got an email, that they may do it in-house, and that's fine. If they're going to do it in-house, then I think, as a borough, we then need to reduce Leo's contract because he's not doing the maintenance on the field anymore for the high school. So that's something that we need to make a decision, that we leave it as is, or we say, "Okay, they're going to do it in-house, therefore..." Maybe he doesn't want to do it for the high school. I'm not speaking for Leo. I'm speaking only on the borough's contract. If he's not going to maintain the two fields for them during their season, or Mike said they use all three fields, then we should get a credit back for our contract because they're going to have to pay their maintenance guys to go there, do the fields, clean the bathrooms, pick up the trash. Whatever deal they work with Leo, that's fine. I just want council to know that if they do it in-house, and I already said this also to Leo, then we're going to ask for a credit back of 20-some dollars a day towards the days he's not working. And I think it comes out to about $2,400 that we would want to be credited back this year since, you know, they're going to do it, or however things go in the work. So that was one issue with the fields. So Mr. Polensky came in Friday and signed the contract with the borough to do the fields for us. Anything he does for the high school is between the high school and them. I know that we tried, you know, we're working hand-in-hand with the high school. I was a little disappointed in a letter that we're retaliating or something against the kids by some school board members, which isn't true. If anybody feels that way, I wish they would come to a meeting and say, you know, confront us with that or confront me with that. As far as Mike Lally today and Tom Schaefer, Leo talked to Mike. Mike really wants him to do the fields, and so does the superintendent. They don't think anybody can do what Leo's doing out there and be as dependable as Leo. There was a letter that we have, you want to read that letter?
This is from March 2nd, late in the afternoon, Friday. And it was addressed to me from Mr. Lally, who's the athletic director of the Bristol High School. "Hi, Jim. John D'Angelo called me today to tell me that Leo Polensky was unable to work the fields this year. I can't say enough about the quality of work Leo performs. Our fields are known as some of the best in the area. If he is unable to work this year, we will surely miss him. The high school season officially begins on Monday. The three fields we use over at the complex are going to be filled in the next week or so. Can you shed some light on what plan the borough has for the field maintenance if it is in fact true that Leo is not available? Should we, as a district, find someone in the meantime? Do we have a replacement, and we can continue our past arrangement?" I don't want to overstep our bounds on borough property. We're just against the calendar and need some direction. So based on that, we wound up meeting with Mr. Lally and the school superintendent twice, and I had additional phone call in the middle of it with Mr. Lally.
So I think that the question becomes, and I just want to understand this one more time. Tony, I know you and Dave sent a letter to this council stating that you hired Mr. Hornstein. Let's put that aside, because I really don't care about Mr. Hornstein or whatever this... Let's put that aside, because I really don't care about Mr. Hornstein, or whatever this, doesn't mean nothing to me. What I want to know is, is anybody against Leo doing the fields? I mean, are you, I'm trying to understand what your thought process was behind this.
I don't have anything against Leo, it's just, you know, my fault was that, you know, have to follow the, you know, the Pennsylvania code with the, the bit requirements.
We explained that when, you know, and I said to Dave, if you guys would have brought this up in a work session to discuss it, we had to, or get our legal opinion. If you would have brought it up at the regular meeting, when you were here, you didn't want to discuss it, you just said you brought that up. And then three days later, we get a letter from Mr. Hornstein saying he's representing you and Dave, which I took offense to, but I'm not looking to argue tonight. That's your opinion, I always thought we could disagree, we walk out here as friends, that's fine, but to me, that went to another level. So...
I definitely don't have anything against Leo. So what you're telling, telling us now is that Mr. Polanski is now gonna be doing the contract, the borough contract, for under ten thousand dollar?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that. I'm not saying that.
I thought we're getting twenty-four hundred hours from the...
I don't know, no.
No?
Let me explain it one more time. What I'm saying to you is, that he does the fields for the borough. Including in him doing the fields, he maintain, he gets the fields ready for the high school, which we always paid for in the past. We never went to the school board and said, look, you need to pay Leo so much a day, you need to pay for the diamond dust, you need to pay for dirt, you need to pay for lime, you need to, we took that all out of borough recreation funds. We have never sent the school a bill for anything. That diamond dust is eight hundred dollars, the skid that we get every year. The more rain, the more skid you go through. We never asked for any money. What I'm saying is, if the school board elects to do the fields in-house, or if Leo elects not to do the fields for the school, then we should be credited back money, since he's not doing, they're doing the fields for their own games. So that means, if Leo's gonna do them for us and the school, we'll keep it at the twelve thousand dollars. If Leo is not doing them for the school, then I feel there should be a credit back to the borough of about twenty-four hundred dollars, because he's not doing the three fields for the borough.
And is that, is that a decision that is gonna be up to Leo ultimately?
No, I... Well, it's Leo's decision. We can't tell him who to work for and who not to work for.
Right.
So all I'm saying is, if the school board, they're gonna, according to Tom Schaefer, they're gonna discuss this Thursday night at their meeting, they need to make a deal with Leo, not with, not with us. We don't, as far as I'm concerned, unless you guys feel different, we're not asking the school for any money. I think that we've been doing it for X amount of years, that we're paying for this, we continue to pay for it. But I'm only bringing it up because Mr. Gerard said, he gets paid from the school also, which he does, and that is to line the fields. He gets dirt, from what I understand, and I could be wrong, I'm only going by what I'm getting feedback from people at the school, is that he charges them, I think, thirty dollars a day to line the fields, and to clean up some trash when they're done.
Is there any overlap in, in the season, when a school's using it, and our, our recreation program's using it?
There's an overlap, but the high school uses the main, the big field, and the big hardball field, and the one minor league field, basically for their season. And then Little League's on the Little League field, the minor league alternates on that field, and then when they're done, then all fields are being used, I think, by borough.
I just want to play devil's advocate here. What happens if however the school chooses to do this isn't up to par of what we've been used to with our recreation program?
I don't know.
You know, what, that's just the fields, what about the bathrooms? He clean, you know, he...
Well, they're gonna clean the bathroom and clean the trash. According to, according to Mike and Tom today, they're gonna have to give us a whole harmless letter, they gotta give us insurance, because that's what Leo had to do, he had to provide insurance to the borough. If a kid rounds first base, and there's a, a problem with the field, they're gonna sue everybody, so we needed insurance from Leo to protect us. Not that we're not gonna be brought into it, but if they elect to do this, there are the things that, and they need to clean the bathrooms every day, and they need to pick up all the trash every day.
And what's recourse if they don't?
Well, you're not gonna take that on the kids, and tell them they can't play.
Well, they're gonna judge our, our recreation program, because all of a sudden we're in this, I don't know what you want to call it.
Pickle.
I know what I want to call it, but I shouldn't tell them what to call it.
Bring this problem on.
I know, but I, by avoiding, by avoiding this whole issue, are we creating a bigger, a bigger problem? I can see parents, you know, the Little League, and the travel team got up there and spoke about how they, you know, what a great job they, they do, and everybody comments on our fields. Well, now, if we're not taking care of that, what happens if it's not taken care of properly? I'm not saying that the school can't do it properly, but if they don't, I mean, Leo's been doing this, they have three generations of, of the Fields family have been doing those fields, and I'm sure there's knowledge that they had on maintaining that field, that you won't have, just, you know, it's not just cutting grass. So I, I would just like some assurance that our kids are playing on the same quality fields that we provided five years.
What I said to Mike and Tom today is that, if you send a guy there, whatever, the school's gotta send somebody there, say it's four hours a day, it's probably gonna be more, but if they're rate, when they get done with their benefits and all, it's forty dollars an hour, forty-some dollars an hour, it's gonna cost them a few hundred a day to, to do the fields. But that's, that's, that's simple math, it's up to them. Tony?
Yeah, I mean, the only thing that, that we keep talking about, to me, it's simple. We, we already decided, we voted as a council, four to three, that he got the contract. I don't even know what, what we were even arguing about. It's okay, the solicitor thinks it's okay, why are we just not going about it? I don't know why we keep talking about it.
No, because I'm bringing up the fact that Mr. Gerard said that he also gets paid from the school.
Right, no, I'm just saying, I just don't know why we're just not moving forward.
Well, no, the problem is, if he doesn't do the fields for the school, then I felt that we should be credited money back, don't you? If he's not doing them?
To me, it just sounds like that's just a way to say, you know, we're gonna get twenty-four hundred back and put it under ten green, which...
That doesn't even matter, it's not what I'm discussing.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying what it looks like, that's all.
It doesn't look like anything. I'm trying to say what's right is right, that if the school's sending their people there to do the fields, and we're paying him to do the fields that he's not doing, therefore, the borough should be credited money back, that's all. I mean, it's, it can't be any simpler than that. We're not voting on Leo's contract. Leo has a contract with the borough. If he elected not to do the fields, then we would, you know, we, we had to go into another option, which we already discussed, how we would maintain the fields.
When do the games, when do the high school games go live?
Mike said today, next week, they got scrimmages and stuff.
And so they're, and they're not, on Thursday, they're gonna decide whether or not Leo will be doing...
I don't know what they're doing Thursday.
...or not? So if, if, we're not, we're not meeting, so if they decide on Thursday that, that Leo's not doing it?
Then they gotta send somebody to do them.
Well, it doesn't sound like, to me, it doesn't sound like it's, it's the school board, it sounds like it's up to Leo.
No, that's not true.
No? Oh. Well, if, did we just, didn't you just read a letter from Lally and...
I talked to Tom Schaefer a half hour before I walked into this council chamber, and his response to me was, they will be discussing this Thursday night, and he'll get back to me. And Mr. Palafka's here, if you want to add anything to this, or if I'm wrong in any way.
Um, I was not in on the talks in your meetings, and I'm in the dark.
Well, did you get an email tonight that you're gonna be discussing it Thursday?
No, I got an email that there was talks.
Talk Thursday.
Uh, I don't believe it said that.
All right, well...
It just said that you had meetings, uh, that you had one Friday or Thursday, and then you get it today. I mean, I'm sure, we're concerned, I'm sure we're gonna talk about it. I, I don't know, you know, which, I don't know who has ideas, who doesn't.
All right, it's fine. So I called Tom, that you guys will get back to us, I guess, on Friday.
That's where it was left then, that we're gonna get back to you guys Friday.
Yep. Yeah, and we also, Mr. Dillon said, we also said to Mike and Tom, if you want to bring any school board members today, they are more than welcome to come to this meeting.
I didn't, I didn't, I wasn't, I didn't get a call until after, in fact, so I, I would have made myself available.
But, so you understand, we don't have anything to do with Leo, I'm sure you, so if he's gonna, if Leo's going to work for the school, it's between you, you guys, and Leo, not the borough and Leo.
I mean, look, I know Leo better than anybody in this room, and so do you. Nah, it doesn't work on Verizon, so, you know.
It's more than... ...tonight.
No, I'm, I'm fine right here. I mean, I, hey, I'll tell you, I know Leo longer than anybody here in Bella probably. Tony's his cousin, maybe a little different. You've known him a long time. I don't know what happened, I'm, I'm not privy to that stuff. Um, I have nothing bad, no.
The guy on the camera just said he can't hear you, the guy in the back.
Um, I, I would never say anything bad about his work.
Oh, Jeff, sorry. Sorry. I called you Mark, I'm sorry, I meant Jeff, yeah.
Whatever. They called me Mike too, Nick, Frank, Regina, it don't matter. Um, yeah, I, look, I don't, the fields always look great, I was on the Little League board myself, we've never had a problem, does great work. As far, as far as I can make out, the issue is the length of the contract in the amount, so that, and that's between you guys and Leo. If he chose to resign, or not want to be, want to do our fields, or during our time playing, you know, we'll have to come up with something. I don't know, I really don't know, we haven't really talked about it, other than just hearing bits and pieces from council, through Tom and Lally.
Well, did you see the letter that was sent to the borough?
No, I did not. From...
From, to two councilmen, from Lou Hornstein?
No, no, I did not.
I think that's how this whole thing started.
I, I mean, I heard bits and pieces from the council meeting that night last week, but, I mean, I thought for sure, when you went back in for recess, you would come out with a compromise, but unfortunately, it didn't work out, so I, I don't know. We're gonna talk about it, I would like to talk about it sooner, you know, before Thursday, but that, no, that's not up to me, I'm, you know, I'm just one, one member of the, of the board, so...
All right, well, let us know.
I'm sorry I can't give you any more info, I really don't have it.
The problem is, the kids need to play baseball.
I agree, I agree, and we want them to be safe and have a...
I don't think this should have waited till Thursday night, but that's the school board. So when, the only thing I want to say, Jeff, is that I, I mean, Mr. Devine accused me already of retaliating against the kids. I just want, in case the kids aren't playing, we're doing everything we can to make it happen.
And, and, and we're gonna do our, you know, we're gonna do our share also, I mean, I don't know what else we can do.
Exactly. Nobody's retaliating against anybody.
No, I mean, it, it is what it is, unfortunately, like I said, nobody has a problem with Leo's work, his family's been doing it since I was a kid, and I'm thirty-nine, so, you know, and like I said, it's nothing to do with that, it's a legal thing, whatever.
I think that if they would have asked an opinion from our solicitor, it would have been resolved, instead of taking it to hiring somebody to come after council. So that's their opinion, that's nothing to do with you.
Yeah, I mean, we all have opinions, I mean, you know, I don't, I don't know, but we're certainly gonna do our best to work it out. I don't know the, the real details of it, but we do, I have to say this, Little League does run, I mean, I know there's teams out there now wanting to practice, so we do interact, and there is, you know, when we get done, they come on, or vice versa.
All right.
I think we're gonna use the big field, the hardball field, the main softball field up front, and possibly that other softball field in the back. We may not have a JV team, so it could, it could be used for practice for somebody else or whatever.
But everybody thinks this is a five-minute thing out there.
No, no, absolutely not.
I think if you take the amount of time that is put in, I don't think any of us here would go do it for that amount of money.
I don't think, and look, I'm not taking sides or anything, but I know, I, I don't think the minority of council are picking at anybody. I think it has to just be a legal thing with the money part, you know, they, they have no hard feelings against Leo, or whoever does the fields. But, I mean, it's just hard to distinguish now, you're talking about cleaning bathrooms and things like that, it's gonna be hard to distinguish whose trash is whose. So, I mean, are we gonna be blamed for trash that, you know what I mean, I don't want to get into that stuff, when it comes down, you know, when it comes down.
Mike, that's all the things, I think, the Harb, the big softball field, and the bathrooms and everything on that side, you guys will take care of, and we'll take care of the Little League side.
Yeah, like I said, hopefully, we could get together and before Thursday, and discuss it, and have something for you before then. But I, you know, I'll, I'll try my best to get everybody together, but I don't know how successful that'll be.
Okay.
Okay.
So hopefully, this puts the Leo thing to bed. Does anybody else, because I don't, you know, next week, I don't need to discuss this anymore. Tony, you weren't here, you want to say anything else?
None.
Okay. All right, with that, can we get into our agenda?
Yes. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the, for the approval of council work session minutes three, five, eighteen, accept the treasurer's report for December two thousand seventeen and January two thousand eighteen, accept the police and DJ's report for February two thousand eighteen, accept the fire chief's report for February two thousand eighteen, accept the inspection department report for February two thousand eighteen, to accept the public works department report for February two thousand eighteen, to accept the Harb report and decisions for two, twenty-six, eighteen.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Motion to adopt the wireless telecommunications ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven and location map.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fee resolution for, for wireless telecommunications facilities.
Second. Second by Mr. Pezza, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for community development block grant application for accessible curb grants, in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second by Mr. Cattroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for Penn dot multimodal transportation fund grant for a one million...
Squad, and him, one of the doctors, I don't know if the chief and the mayor are gonna be involved in Fire Two ever, running a meeting here on Thursday, and they're gonna video something about this opioid crisis and, uh, the things that they're dealing with and all. So, that'll be running on our channel to, to be broadcast. So, instead of having a town meeting, they requested, 'cause there's really big functions going on. I think the last day, everything ends in Newtown at the Knack, where there's supposed to be like several hundred peoples, and then everybody that participated can go to this last event. So, everybody understands, on our channel, there will be, uh, discussion, we'll have some, all right, it'll be going on in April. Okay, number four.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the ordinance for restricted parking on Wood Street.
Second.
Second by Mr. Catroci.
Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number five.
Motion to adopt the wireless telecommunications ordinance amending chapter twenty-seven and location map.
Second by Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number six.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the fee resolution for the, for wireless telecommunications facilities.
Second by Mr. Pezza. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number seven.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for community development block grant application for accessible curb rent, grants in the amount of three hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Number eight.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the resolution for Penn dot multimodal transportation fund grant for a one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second by Mr. Catroci, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Need a motion to suspend the rules?
President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
President, I'd like to make a motion to grant Grundy, uh, the AOC, uh, ten thousand dollars for field trips and other needs.
Ms. Rodriguez, questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second by the-